I'm Jan Perry. This is the Energy and Environment Special Meeting, Wednesday, September the 23rd. It's about 10 after 9. We are Room 1010 in City Hall. While we don't have a quorum, I think we should begin. And we have three, well, two agendized items and one item that was introduced yesterday by Councilmember Greg Smith, but they all deal with the same issue. And as a professional courtesy to Councilmember Smith, what we're going to do today is to roll all of these items into one. And what I will do first is ask Mr. Smith to come on up and say a few words. And we have three speaker cards. I'll open and close the public comment on these two items, plus the one that Mr. Smith introduced yesterday. And then we'll take some additional input from staff and anyone else they brought, consultants and the like. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and Mr. Kretz, Cardenas, Alarcon. Good to see you.
You too.
I love it when no one shows up because then you do whatever you want, right?
Just get it done, you know.
Just get it done, right. But thank you very much for letting me speak. I introduce the motion because one of the things I've heard frequently out in the hustings of our districts is, "What is going on with water and power?" I think as a fiduciary responsibility, we always want to find out, but of course, as a proprietary department, we don't manage them on a daily basis. So it's appropriate for us to ask these questions, what is going on with water and power? When the council two years ago passed the bond issue and let the Water and Power Department go forward with the infrastructure plan, we thought many of these things would begin to get resolved, yet there's questions about whether they are being resolved. We need to know, what is the progress on that plan? Where are they? When we passed that, we also asked if the $30 million that was being held at the time, that was in the lawsuit over the water transfer, was to be put into the infrastructure and moved forward right away. I'd like to know if that money has been actually put into that plan and moved forward. And finally, we need to ask the question from a technical point of view, and certainly I can't answer that, is what has been the impact of watering that we've put in our conservation plan and telling people to water two days a week? Is that causing extraordinary pressure on our water system that may be contributing to the breakages we seem to be having lately? Or is this really just an anomaly that just the news media's gotten a hold of and wants to make something out of? We don't know those questions. As a council, I think it's our responsibility to ask those questions. That was the purpose of my motion. We have Dr. Bardet here today from USC, who has made some comments on it. I think that he has some very good insight, and I hope you'll have an opportunity to listen to his insight on this and take some of the recommendations he's going to make, as well as our city engineer, and how we can maybe take a good look at this problem and see if there's something that needs to be done to support water and power and getting that program moving faster if necessary. But that was the intent of the motion. I appreciate your hearing today. And with that, I'm anxious to hear the testimony from the other folks that are here today.
So what I will do first, so we can make sure that we let the public who did fill out cards, and this will close that period on submitting cards on items one, two, or three. And Dr. Williams, it seems that you've submitted a card on one, two, and three. So if you wouldn't mind, so we can get to hearing the testimony, if you could, I could give you a minute on each. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Two minutes.
Oh, well, my goodness, thank you.
A little bit, sorry, Dr. Clyde Williams, El Serena.
Okay.
A little bit of background. Twenty-plus years with Parsons, we actually did the entire city of Cairo, Egypt, with nine million people, the Water Supply Management Plan, including, we broke some pipes because we increased the pressure on those pipes. This particular situation here in my hometown is tragic. Usually, it's deferred maintenance. That is, if you have net surplus revenues going to one thing and not going to the pipe work, there's something wrong. So, yes, 40 years would be the expected lifetime of some of the pipes. A five-foot riveted steel pipe in Los Angeles? These are old pipes. Why weren't they replaced at their normal operating age? This is usually a planned replacement. And you have the money because you have net surplus revenue going elsewhere. So I do have experience. Yeah, I doubt if it is the irrigation system. Closing and opening a six, or five-foot diameter block valve just to repair that section probably put a lot of pressure on other pipes. So, yeah, related leakage? Yes. However, is there an overall pressure plan for the entire system? Because that's what we had in Cairo, big city, nine million people there, twice as here. And we modeled it. We knew where the pressures were. We turned on one pump, and we blew out, and had five feet of water standing in the main square of Cairo, Egypt. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Now, if the team from DWP would come up along with Dr... Does this, I don't have a card up here. You want him to come up now? Is it with the DWP? Okay, yeah, come on up. Is there anybody else who's going to speak on this? Okay. David, why don't you start first? Or Mr. Nahai, why don't you start first?
Certainly. Good morning, Chair Perry. Good morning to the other members of the committee when they arrive. My name is David Nahai, and I'm privileged to serve as the General Manager and CEO of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. With me from the department here this morning is Jim McDaniel, a Senior Assistant General Manager in charge of the water system. And we certainly appreciate the opportunity to appear before you today. And we're here in response to the request made in council. And what we're going to do today is, of course, to talk about the recent spate of water pipe leaks and breaks that we've had. We're going to do three things. First, place this issue in its proper historical context for the committee. Second, we're going to provide an update as to the investigatory steps that are being taken, including our cooperation with outside parties in connection with this matter. And third, we're going to talk about the ongoing management program and steps that are being taken in connection with the overall asset management program. And that presentation will be made by Jim McDaniel. But before he gets to that, I'd like to just take a second, if I may, Chair Perry, to commend the crews of DWP who get out there pretty much day and night in order to deal with infrastructure issues that happen in any city every single day. We have in the city of Los Angeles around 1,400 leaks that occur annually. That's about four a day. And the crews get out there and deal with them in a way that is hardly even noticeable to the public. We have 200 breaks that occur annually. And that average is much better than the national average. And it's perhaps in recognition of this and the dedication of the crews that the LA Department of Water and Power was awarded the Platinum Prize last October by the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies. This is a highly prestigious award that is not given out lightly, and it basically sets LADWP as the standard for other utilities to emulate and to follow. And with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Jim McDaniel.
All right. My name is Jim McDaniel, Senior System General Manager for the water system. I guess we're having problems with our projection facilities, but I understand everybody has a copy of the presentation I'll be working on.
Yeah, me too.
What's that?
Yes, everybody.
Okay. Let me go ahead and just get right into this. I think one of the important things, as Mr. Nahai said, is we wanted to provide some context.
Before you get deeply into it, does that mean that we're definitely not going to come up online, or do you think it's just not going to work?
We'll check with that.
Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. This first slide, I think, is probably the most important slide in the whole presentation. I do have a blow-up of this. I think they've got it on a handout, Alvin. Maybe, Alvin, Alvin, maybe if you could stand over here so that the audience can see it.
Yeah, hold it up, Steve.
As we've been saying, the leaks overall that we're having in the system continue to be within historical norms. I think if you take a look at this chart, what you see here on the far right-hand side are the leaks so far for September. Admittedly, this is a partial month. It's through September 21st. In the last, in the last two days, just to bring you right up to current, we've had in-
Let me ask you a question, Mr. McDaniel, because I appreciate context and all of that. But I really want to get to the point in your presentation where you talk about what your thoughts are on potential causes or reasons. So, and I appreciate all that.
Right.
But-
I guess the point of this is, when we look at causes and reasons, we look at what's going on outside of the normal. And there's, what the data is showing here is we're not that far outside of the normal. We admittedly, some of the breaks that we're having are of the more severe variety.
Correct.
And we are aggressively looking into that. Going on, just quickly through the slides, on the next page, we've got total leaks by fiscal year. Again, this is to show that there's not a, there's not a systemic deterioration of the infrastructure. If there were, you would see increasing trends in this sort of a graph.
Right.
On page four of the presentation, you've got some very hard data on leak rates per 100 miles of distribution pipe. This is the benchmark that the industry uses on a nationwide average. Twenty-five leaks per 100 miles has been identified as an average rate. We're well below that. And you can see that in the last two years, since we began our mainline replacement program, we've dropped significantly. So this tells us that the efforts that we're taking on mainline are having impacts. Now, the thing that's really, I think, getting a lot of attention are these breaks that are of a more severe nature, that we call the blowouts. First of all, I'd like to talk, and Councilmember Kretz is here, and this was in your district, that the Coldwater break was on a trunk line, one of our very large diameter pipelines. Those are very rare. They don't happen very often. When they do, they are, they're going to be spectacular. Most of the, most, all these blowouts that we are tracking here are on much smaller pieces of pipe, but they do cause damage, they do cause inconvenience, and we still want, we want to address them. But even the data that we have here indicates that the two previous years, we've been down from some of the historical averages that we've had. I'm not saying that it's not a problem. I'm not saying that we take this lightly. We definitely are going to be aggressively pursuing this, but I just wanted to provide some background data.
Well, I think what made people sit up and take notice, I certainly did because they were both in my district, was having this spectacular blowout on Coldwater, followed almost immediately by a huge sinkhole with a large fire truck in it. It starts to make you wonder what's happening.
Certainly.
You know, are we going to have one of these every week? And the first one had a clear connection to the fact that the pipe was 95 years old. That wasn't a total shock. The next one was a relatively recent piece of piping, so that wouldn't explain it either.
Right.
So that's the question. You have one on the heels of another, one nearby to another.
Are you going to-
Now, are there a connection between the two, and can we foresee more of these in the future?
He's hanging up.
Well, I think indications are that-
David, after you answer his question, can we jump ahead to page seven because we've got to get to the efforts to determine the cause of the leaks?
All right.
Okay.
Just to say briefly, no, between what happened on Coldwater and what happened in Valley Village, we've not been able to determine that there's any connection between the two. And I think really what happened was that we had a significant event, which was the rupture of the trunk line. The last time there was a rupture of that kind, by the way, was in 1993. So it's a very rare event. And that was, of course, right after Labor Day, on Tuesday, was the accident with the fire truck. And it's natural that it would focus the attention of Angelenos and that these questions would come up. But as we take a look at the numbers that we're providing to you today, you know, we'll see, and I don't want to keep going back to that chart, but we'll see that there are other Augusts and Mayes and Junes-
Okay, but I, I, we get that. But we, I want to, I want to get to the data extraction, the pipe samples, the evaluation of pressure relief, so that we can talk about, and maybe your consultant from USC can jump in here, the methodologies, and then let's talk about some causal connections.
Okay. So we'll move on then to page seven. We are aggressively investigating this moderate increase in the more severe breaks. The staff is collecting data, and we're investigating each of these major breaks to determine a root cause. We have put together a panel of outside experts to assist us with this. And I'll get into the details of the panel here.
You can just list, I mean, JPL, USC, and Cornell?
Sure. So our panel of experts consists of JPL, who will be specifically looking at some of the geophysical, possible geophysical links to these breaks. Cornell University, their specialty is infrastructure vulnerability and specifically pipeline failure mechanisms. We've done work with Cornell in the past. And then we've got the University of Southern California, represented by Dr. JP Bardet here. And their role is going to, excuse me, is going to be overall coordination of this expert team. And they also have the capabilities of bringing in other renowned worldwide experts to fill any gaps that are identified as the analysis continues.
Okay. So do you want him to speak now? Or do you, what do you want to do?
I was going to-
Start talking about that?
Maybe I could just talk a little bit about page eight, and then Professor Bardet could talk a little bit. So some of the, some of the investigation methodologies that we're pursuing right now, data extraction and geographical analysis of breaks. We've been building a very large GIS database over the last five years. It's now to the point where we can start harvesting that database and really using it to help prioritize pipes for replacement, and also to help us find linkages. We're doing visual inspections on all the leaks and documentation. Sometimes you can see things from the visual inspection. Most of the pipes that we've looked at, there's some element of corrosion involved in the pipe. That's not unusual. There's exterior corrosion and there's interior corrosion. We have to look at both of those kinds and see what may have caused it. The pipe could have been damaged when it was installed. It could be a manufacturing-type issue. So there's, just because there's corrosion, you really need to look beyond that and see. We are analyzing those pipe samples in the lab. We're taking a look at all of our pressure relief facilities. You know, off times when we have problems with pipe breaks, they are associated with overpressurization. So we need to make sure that operationally, we don't have issues with our pressure relief stations, isolation gates, or other things like that. We're looking at temperature as a possible cause, temperature gradients, water chemistry, pH conductivity, chlorine content, and other biological factors in the water. We're looking at, and as I mentioned, you know, geophysical conditions, earth movement and that sort of thing. So perhaps Bardet would want to come on.
All right. So why don't you tell us what you think from the leak to the blowout?
Okay. Well, my name is Jean-Pierre Bardet, also known as JP Bardet. I am the Chair of the Sonya Staney Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering at USC, and also the Director of the Center on Mega-Cities. So you heard a lot in the press, and I think by reading in the press, I'm sure all of you are confused. So am I. There have been some statements made on the possible causes of this, this increase in water breaks. On our side, we have looked at several factors, and indeed, there are many factors, and we cannot conclude which factors at this moment is the dominant factors. You heard about the increase in pressures. You heard about possible change in water temperature due to change in water supplies. You heard about age of the pipes. You heard about corrosion of the pipes. There are many factors here which are, I think, we need to investigate. At this stage, it's fair to say that if we look at a system which is 7,200 miles long, enough to connect LA to New York, we have a big task in front of us. It's a very complicated system we have to look at, and indeed, the statistics here need to be dealt with with care, so we can understand if we have trends within our statistics. It is true that overall, there's not been an increase in the numbers of breaks. However, we have seen trends in the way the breaks affect the public. Certainly, we are here today because the public has responded to a change in the way the breaks disrupt the operations, I mean, the daily life. So we have something to look into as far as how we can maybe minimize the effects of breaks on the public and on the businesses. So there's many things to look into, and I wish I would have an answer to you today, but I cannot. There's much more investigation to be done before we can come up in front of you and report with definitive conclusion.
I have a question on prioritization, your prioritization methodology, and I don't suppose we should have ever taken that for granted, but I would have imagined that prioritization would have been an ongoing activity conducted by the department, so that at any given point in time, the department should be able to pull up their prioritization of aged pipes, where they are, and, you know, address that through their work schedule, work program. Has that not been the case?
It has been the case. Jim will explain it a little bit more. We can jump to page 11. And we do have a mounted depiction of the work that is being done. Perhaps, Jim, we can take the committee through that.
Page 12. Page 12.
Yeah.
Page 11.
Well, page 12 is an example, but when we look at prioritization and decision-making, there's various methodologies that can be used. In the past, we would look at, you can do this based solely on age, but age is not necessarily a good indicator of pipe failures. And we have an example of that on page 13, where we give a little plot of the oldest pipes that are in green and the leakiest pipes that are in red. And you can see that if you went in and just replaced pipes based on age, you would be replacing the pipes that aren't necessarily the leakiest pipes. So we need to look beyond age. Certainly, age is a factor. Condition, like number of leaks, it's a big factor for us. Again, we don't want to use just leaks solely as the factor, so we use a weighted-based approach.
Let's look at it within another context. You have the Water Infrastructure Improvement Program, and that's been in place for how long?
As the, as the, as a program with mainline replacements specifically identified, two years now.
Okay, two years. And did it, did it start at that time moving forward, or did it do gather information on a retroactive basis?
Well, we've been, we've been replacing, we've been replacing mainline longer than that, but we didn't really necessarily identify it as a separate program until two years ago.
Okay, okay. All right. So then I guess the question for me is, is it moving, has it moved at an adequate pace to address aging or the most vulnerable infrastructure situations or unusual pressure fluctuations? This is not the first time or the first season we've conserved water in this city.
Right. You know, we feel that we are moving forward on this. We've gone from, we have increasing goals, and we've added staff in this program, consistent with our capital improvement program. We started out at 70,000 feet. Last year, we did 90,000 feet. This year, our goal's 110,000 feet. We think that, and we think the numbers, if you go back to that slide with the leaks per 100 miles of main, there is a correlation between when we started this focused approach of looking at these things, and we've reduced the number of leaks per 100 miles of main. So I guess the short answer to your question is, yes, we think we're on the right track, and we think we're moving in the right direction. We're constantly analyzing the program to determine whether additional, excuse me, acceleration needs to be made. At this time, we think we're on the right track.
So you're not, you're not saying, you don't say that the program needs to be reassessed to be more expeditious in light of the latest spate of ruptures?
I think it would be premature to say that at this time. I think the overall number of ruptures is still with, is still within historical norms. I think we need to find out why we're seeing this type of rupture that causes more disruption and it's more damaging.
Well, then let me ask another question in another context. I guess last week, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners continued an item that would have rolled back water use restrictions from two days a week to three days a week. Now, I'm wondering if the thought behind that was, is that it would have helped matters, and this was continued by the board, I believe. And when do they intend to consider it again?
Well, it was, it was deferred by the, by the board, which means that it was continued to the next, to the next meeting. But I think the feeling of the, of the commission, if I may attribute that to the commission, is that this is a highly successful program in terms of water conservation. The amount of water conserved is tremendous. And so I don't know whether the commission will feel that it makes sense to roll back the program that is proven to be such a success.
So there was no discussion about that and any possible correlation with the-
No, I, I don't think, I don't think the reason why, why that item wasn't considered, I don't think had anything to do with this issue. This is, this is at best tenuous at this point to draw this conclusion. And we haven't seen something like this happening in other jurisdictions as a result of water conservation measures. Now, it may be that there are differences between the Long Beach program and the LA program, or other places that would account for, for why others haven't seen this kind of result. But it's, I think, way too early at this point to go down this rather speculative path of saying that because we're-
I'm not speculating. I'm asking questions at this point because I think we're all struggling to figure out what's going on. And, you know, each time it happens, you know, it raises people's anxiety level higher and higher. Last year, the council authorized water rate increases of about 3% for two years to support upgrades to the water system. Are these funds to be expended at a rate that's commensurate with the need for infrastructure upgrades?
Yes, we believe so. And I think that the numbers speak for themselves. We've seen considerable improvement as far as leaks per mile are concerned. Again, you know, the charts that we've put before you showed that this, this might be nothing more than yet another wave in terms of, that has happened again and again and again over in history.
Well, no, I understand. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, in terms of delivering service to communities, while this may not be a statistical anomaly, or where it may be well within context of what is statistically normal, I think we can't, that's not an answer to our customers.
Of course.
As you know, it's just not. That's just, we have to do better. And I don't mean to sound, you know, saccharine about it, but it's just common sense. A couple of weeks ago in council, I requested that the department prioritize for us the most vulnerable water system infrastructures. And have you had a chance to do that yet? most vulnerable water system infrastructures, and have you had a chance to do that yet?
We're still in the progress of responding to your request.
Yeah.
I would like to tell you, though, that I think one of the things I mentioned before was this GIS tool that we have available to us.
Yeah.
And I think that's a way where we can take the funds that have already been approved by Council and probably spend them even smarter. I'm not saying that, I don't think we made a mistake. I think all the infrastructure we've replaced has been a good investment, but we can probably even pinpoint more with better data and have better predictive capabilities going forward, and we're using those tools to be able to do that.
Okay. When do you think you'll be able to produce those findings so that we can discuss them in committee?
I'm having the staff analyze that as part of this overall report. We're hoping to have a preliminary report in 30 days.
Okay. I'm going to give Mr. Smith a chance to ask any additional questions he wants to ask.
Yeah, just two. One is, I'd like to see in your presentation a chart of the amount, either in feet that you did or however you calculated, a historical and a match-up with the charts he's already given us, and the repairs that you were doing prior to the bond and after the bond, so I can see what you've done in a way is increase. And are we spending to the level that we were borrowing? We were borrowing X number of dollars for infrastructure. Have we been spending to that level, or were we ramping up and not getting 100% efficiency yet out of the money that was borrowed? So I want to see a chart showing how much we've been historically fixing prior to the bond and what we've been fixing after to see what impact we're making for the future. And finally, and this is really, I'm just kind of going on memory a little bit, but, you know, for the better part of a century, we use different water. We use our mono water, which was a cleaner, nicer, better water. The MWD water has much higher salinity levels, and if I'm not mistaken, they switch from chlorinating water to, is it oxidized water or...
Raminated.
Okay.
Which we also have in our system.
Yeah. So we're using that on our water system as well?
Yes, in parts.
Is that...
The process of switching over to that is our normal...
Would that have any impact on corrosion levels or anything like that?
We don't believe that. There's been some very extensive studies about chlor, links between chloramines and possible corrosion. There's ways to deal with that through the treatment process, and we felt that we are dealing with that. The leak patterns that we've seen don't seem to correlate with the areas that have chloraminated water, that there just doesn't seem to be a linkage there.
Okay.
But as I mentioned, all of this water chemistry stuff, we're going to look at all the different water chemistry parameters as, I don't want to overlook anything. I don't want to take anything for granted in this study going forward.
Okay.
On the watering, I just wanted to comment because there's been, I don't think it's been necessarily coming from us, but comments and letters to the editor and things about pressure, and everybody seems to have an opinion about how the pressure's affected. Just so you know the facts, there are fluctuations in pressure on the watering days, but what they are is they're fluctuations in downward pressures. There's no spike in pressures caused by the two-day-a-week watering. Because of that, we don't think that's a likely cause, but like I said, I don't want to overlook anything. I don't want to assume anything.
Yeah.
I want to look at it.
But I'm not, you know...
But it's not a spike in pressure. It's an incorrect state. It's an incorrect...
It's the opposite effect, but I'm not an engineer, but there's an effect called cavitation too, when you're pulling a lot out, all of a sudden, you're creating a suction as well too. So I'm not an engineer, there's...
A lot is, but I don't think we're at that...
There are different impacts of high pressure and low pressure.
That's why we're going to look at it.
That's exactly what the idea was, so. And as far as the motion, it seems I wrote the motion on three-day watering. To correct you, Mr. Nahai, it's not going to change or negatively impact our watering, it's actually going to positively impact because my proposal says reduce it to eight minutes every third day, three days a week, rather than 15 minutes twice a week, which is less water usage. And I can tell you, I've been breaking the city ordinance for about three months now. My lawn looks a lot better doing eight minutes of three days a week than two times a week, 15 minutes. So come cite me if you want, but I'm using less water because of it, so that's just a personal opinion.
Okay, all done? You got everything? Mr. Laban?
Thank you, Chairman Perry. Thank you very much. Just a couple of questions I wanted to add. We had an aggressive cement lining project in the 90s throughout the city. Are any of these pipes that are breaking of cement-lined systems?
Yeah, certainly some of the older ones. What that program was, is we went and put cement more lining in all the pipes that were unlined, which at the time, that program concluded, that was about a third of our overall inventory. It was about 2,000 lineal feet out of the 7,200 feet that we have, so it was a significant amount. We spent about $350 million on that program over 30 years. That was our major capital investment in the distribution system infrastructure, and that program concluded about three years ago. Since then, that's when we came up with the Water Infrastructure Program to start systematically ramping up mainline replacements because we weren't spending the money on relining anymore, so we needed to do it on replacement. Some of the pipes that have failed have been relined. It's not, that is not unusual. We didn't expect every pipe to last forever, but I don't, we haven't seen, again, the preliminary analysis hasn't shown any direct correlation between lined pipes and break.
And you had the big cold water, 56-inch pipe?
62.
62-inch pipe. That's the largest.
Right.
What's the average pipe break? Eight inch, 16 inch?
Yeah, most of them are the six, six and eight.
All right. Now, the fire system and their hydrants, that's a different system.
No.
On the same system?
They take their water off the same system.
Same system?
Right.
Okay. So they've been affected at all?
I mean, they would, there would be local hydrant outages, just like there'd be a local outage to customers. I got to tell you, though, that we, the staff has been great. We've been getting on these things when they happen. We usually have them fixed by the end of the day. We do notify the fire department when something like this happens.
They make an adjustment.
So they know that a hydrant's...
When I first see all the problems before cold water, because I would see a lot of sandstone in the gutter, and I'd see broken up streets, and Mr. Melonowski, who's done a great job for you, met me out at Third Street near June where there was a break even before cold water. This is the area Mr. Garcetti and I have in the pink little things are breaks there. I'd like a name and a date of all the breaks that you have there. I know you got a map over there, but I'd like to see that as well and compare it as it goes forward. Do they have any relationships to reservoirs? Because there's a lot in the, what would be Western Avenue West through Mr. Coret's district and south through the Wilshire area. This is out of the Hollywood complex. Is there any correlation between the reservoir systems and these breakers? Or have you looked at that?
I've got a, I've got a map that shows the...
You can say yes or no, Jim.
Pipe breaks. Well, I don't think so.
Don't think so? Okay, but you're looking at it.
I'm not from reservoirs per se, but there is a, you can see in the Hollywood area, there's a noticeable cluster there.
Right.
I need to find out, but that's what we call a regulated system. It comes from the, it comes from the reservoirs, but then it has a pressure regulating facility in between it and the reservoir, so I don't think there's a direct connection there.
Two, one question and one comment. Are you going to buy Engine 60, a new fire truck?
Okay. Just so you know, Mr. Laban's is not on the committee, so you can talk to him about this. Actually, he's visiting today.
Last question, last question. Just one last thing, Madam Chair. I want to correct the professor. I think the mileage would be, not L.A. to New York, but L.A. to Paris plus for 7,200 if my geography is right. Thank you.
Mr. Coret, did you have any additional questions?
Yeah, just one. You pointed out the frequency of leaks is not particularly greater this year. I wonder if anyone has ever plotted the more significant breaks to see what the pattern is of those and whether we're higher now or not.
On that yellow, that first graph that I gave you, I know it's a little difficult to see, but the...
Your numbers are off too. By one page.
By one page?
Yeah, by one page number. When you said, when I said 12, you were actually referring to 11, so it's...
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have an older copy, so...
It's our page two.
Our page two.
Okay, what's the title of it?
Six-year leak history.
Okay. Okay, that's, okay.
So at the bottom, you see the ones that are in the kind of the brown-orange colors, those are the, those are the more severe breaks, and then the yellow bars that are stacked on top are the smaller, more minor leaks. And with the distinction we make is the ones that damage a certain threshold of pavement, over 100 square feet. It's somewhat arbitrary, but that's how we've been keeping the data over time, so that's how we, that's how we did make the distinction between a severe and a minor leak. So these, this kind of gives you a, you know, month-to-month breakdown. As Mr. Nahai said, we've seen past months, certainly in the wintertime, you get cold weather and cold water. Those cause main breaks. In the summertime, it's a little less clear why you should have that, but we also have historical, I think it's August of '04, we had a fairly high number of major breaks that month. So we're, you know, working with Professor Bardet and the expert team. We want to analyze this data and see if any meaningful conclusions can be drawn from this.
Yeah, well, it obviously looks like in the last couple of months, we've had a spike, so, although not as spectacular as I would have expected based on what we've been seeing. So what does that tell us? Do we have any idea, having this in the summer months for the first time in a number of years at this level?
Well, we have to, we certainly have to investigate the causes, and this is what we're taking very seriously, and this is what Professor Bardet is going to help us do, as well as JPL, Cornell University, so that we can get down to the bottom of the cause. But just, so we have to do that. We have to provide the service that our customers expect of us. But overall, as you just said, Councilmember, this is not showing the kind of significant explosion in infrastructure problems as to be a real cause for alarm. We're on top of it. We have an ongoing program. We're going to find out what the causes are, and we're going to make sure that these numbers come down. There is one other myth floating around that I should take this opportunity to dispel, and that is about how much water has been lost as a result of this. There was one letter to the Times that just absurdly claimed that we'd lost more water than we'd saved as a result of the conservation program. And the fact of the matter is that we've saved, what, about 30,000 acre feet of water in the conservation program, and the water lost as a result of these leaks and breaks is a minute fraction of that, maybe one-half of 1%.
Less than one-half.
Less than one-half of 1%. So, you know, so as a result of all of the attention, we're also getting a tremendous amount of misinformation floating around, and I think that may also feed people's concerns, and it's up to all of us, while we give the public the assurance that we're going to deal with the issue, to also make sure that there isn't a lot of misinformation out there either.
That was the other thing I was just going to point out, and you've gotten a good start on that. I've heard on some of the wilder radio talk shows and such, both the assertion that we've lost as much water, cold water, as we saved over a certain period of time, and it's clearly just a tiny fraction, and also the idea that our conservation and allowing watering two days a week, that there's, they're asserting a clear correlation. So as soon as we can clearly prove that that isn't the case, we should probably be doing some concerted PR to answer those two misconceptions.
Do you have a question?
No.
Just a couple of other quick questions. Do undetected leaks generally lead to subsidence and then ultimately result in an increased potential for a blowout?
In a pressurized water system, undetected leaks do not usually result in subsidence, and the reason is, is that because our water's under pressure, usually our leaks come to the surface. It's a little bit different in a stormwater or an unpressurized sewer-type situation. There you do get situations where the backfill material will slowly over time fall into the pipe and get washed away, slowly creating these voids that will eventually come up to the surface, and then they break through, and that's commonly referred to as a sinkhole. The things that are happening to us, people use the term sinkhole, but it's really the case of the pressurized water just washing all the dirt onto the street. We can usually account for all the dirt that's missing out of the hole.
A sinkhole is a blowout.
A sinkhole is usually caused by a subsurface void that suddenly collapses. Ours are blowouts where it blows out and hydro excavates the material, and it's all over the street and it makes a big mess. It's a little different, it's a different failure mechanism, but it's not usually associated with undetected leaks.
What capacity does the Department have to learn in a, I guess, a forensic way, once you've had a blowout? What information can you gather from that to prevent future incidents?
Well, I think the...
What have you learned?
Well, I mean, the mechanisms that we, that I've talked to you about, you know, the physical analysis of the pipe, the correlation with the temperature and the chemical properties, we look at all those things.
So have you concluded an investigation yet on, for example, Cold Water Canyon? Has that one been concluded? I know you had another one the other day in Venice. I know there's been one on Venice in the, around Venice and 70th.
Yeah.
Something, one in Mar Vista, another one in Studio City.
Right.
So you've had enough incidents now that, have you compiled any trends, any patterns that are consistent with each incident yet?
As I mentioned, the most, most of the cases, and I'm not going to say it's one-to-one for each one you just named, but most of them have involved some sort of corrosion. That's been a thing. I think one of the difficulties that we're facing in this analysis is it's not just what caused it to break. You know, if you had a sudden spike in breaks that didn't used to be there, then you can really look and say, you know, what's causing the break? Our breaks are running pretty the same, but they appear to be happening in a way that's causing more damage. So now it's not what caused the break, but why did the break break in such a way that it caused this much damage? It sounds like, maybe I'm splitting hairs, but it's a much more difficult question to answer, and that's what we're struggling with.
Okay. So in struggling with that and bringing, go ahead, and bringing your three experts from three different universities and having several opportunities now to review fresh information based on incidents that have occurred, and I know you can't give me a definitive answer today, but working with all that, how do you, how do you expect to reach some kind of a determination as to either the overall cause or the factors that led to the incident, and within what timeframe do you think it's realistic to expect those answers?
Well, as I, as I mentioned, we've asked the team to put together a preliminary report in 30 days to try to get back to you with whatever information we have by then. I have to tell you, and Professor Bardet will probably confirm that we'll probably not have conclusive results by that time, but I hope to have some, some of a progress report for you.
So let me ask you this, then. If this, we don't have solutions or conclusions, would it be realistic to expect that these incidents will continue because we don't know what's causing them?
Well, there is, there is an ongoing repair and replacement program, and we can, we can show it to you.
No, I get that. I totally understand that, and I completely comprehend that, but there's either a gap in the pace of the program, maybe that's a cause of it. It could be the type of materials that were used that may be some common factor in these incidents in terms of, I don't know, the size of the pipe, the velocity, the age of the materials, or the disparity in the materials. It may be that in each incident, the pipes were made out of various different types of materials, and you may find that there is no consistency with respect to the materials. It may be that there is absolutely no correlation to our water conservation efforts, and I completely understand you're wanting to put this in context of whether or not this is a statistical anomaly or not. But that being said, I still think it's a moment in time that we mark, and we move on a going-forward basis. We have these incidents to use as opportunities to investigate, to take the pieces of the pipe, to take the pieces of the road, to see what, are there any things that unify these incidents, and what are the differences? And it should be able to advance our analysis of this, and I understand that the Infrastructure Improvement Program continues. You may come back to us and say, hey, we really need to speed this up. It may be that. And we may want to know, given that we had a rate increase about a year, year and a half ago, we're not going to do another rate increase, but we may need to say, dig a little deeper on your operational costs, and is it too operationally heavy versus, you know, material heavy? What types of contracts are being let? You know, I still think back about, it was when Mr. Potzouris was on the Commission, and there was a pipe, I think, in Toluca Lake, and I think at the very minimum, it leaked, and it may have exploded. And I remember he was very focused on that. He was focused on it because of the contractor. He was focused on it because of the materials. was focused on it because of the materials, and he was focused on it, I think, because of the circumference of the pipe. And so I'm really, I'm struggling along with you to help you get us to this point where we don't have to just sit here and go like, you know, I call Jeff at night and go, okay, we had another one, you know, after we watched the 10 o'clock news. I would prefer to be on the other side of that, which is that we're not having to make those calls, you know, and go through the triage.
So would I. And we're working very hard to get to that point, Councilwoman, and I'm confident that we'll have the answers for you.
Well, we were not going to vote today, so you'll be back in 30 days and advance this discussion, and with a heavy emphasis on perhaps the analysis of the incidents that have occurred to, you know, propel us forward at a much quicker pace.
Absolutely.
And in the meantime, let's hope we don't have any more incidents. All right, thanks, everybody. And Dr. Williams, if he is, is Dr. Williams still here? Okay, he had a public comment card. This is the time for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda are welcome to come forward at this time. If not, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.